You'll go.
Yeah, it's right up to it too.
So I was telling Stephanie.
I was counting.
The uh.
All rise for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Welcome, everyone. We just got back from an executive session where we discussed litigation, boards and commissions, interviews, and personnel matter. Is there any public comment on agenda items? No, hearing none. The announcements for this month are Doylestown Township Municipal Offices will be closed Monday, February nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-four, for President's Day. The next regular meeting of the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors will be held on Tuesday, February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-four, at seven P M. Applications are now being accepted by the Doylestown Township Board of Supervisors for vacancies on various boards and commissions. Please check our website, www.doylestownpa.org for vacancies. Christmas tree drop off, the trees can be dropped off at the New Britain Road entrance to Central Park anytime during this month. Leaf and yard waste recycling can be dropped off the third Saturday of each month from nine A M. to eleven A M. and the first and fourth Tuesday of the month, between the hours of nine A M. and two P M. Keep up to date with township news and events. Sign up for our e-news at doylestownpa.org. E-news is sent out every Friday at four P M. It's got wonderful content to keep you up to date on what is going on in our township. All right, next on the agenda, minutes approval. Has everybody had an opportunity to read the minutes?
Yep.
Yes.
Any changes, corrections?
Move for the approval of the minutes from February second.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Do you see me yet?
Yep.
We do see you.
Oh, okay.
For everybody out there, Barbara Lyons is zooming in on the meeting today.
Hello, everybody.
Next order of business, we received a resignation. Chief, would you like to, oh, this was a volunteer resignation. Do I have a motion to accept the resignation?
I'll make the motion.
To accept the resignation?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm sorry, should I clarify who it's from?
Pardon?
Should I clarify who the resignation's from? For the committees, from the Veterans Committee, it's Catherine Worth-Torrenta.
Catherine Worth-Torrenta, yes.
So thank you for your service.
Solicitor comments? I have no report this evening, thank you. Township engineer?
Nothing at this moment.
Chief?
I'd like to recognize the receipt of a letter of resignation received from a police clerk, Janet Casey, who will be retiring from the Police Department in April after fifteen years of service. I'd also like to take a second to thank Paul Gore and the Road Department for their efforts during the rain event last Tuesday. Then again, the entire Public Works Department for last night's storm, as well as my on-duty staff during both events. There, these efforts may often go unnoticed to a lot of people, however, it's important to remember that their coordinated efforts between the Road Department and the Police Department on scene greatly decrease the impact these storms have on our township. So I'd like to thank them again, including the Road Department, Public Works, and my officers themselves. That's all I have this evening.
Thank you. Director of Operations?
Okay, I just have a few items. But first is our two thousand and twenty-four M B I S inspections. This is for our bridge structures. They could be on-road or bike and hike trails, and this is our two-year inspection cycle. A number of structures, we either inspect them every two years, every four years. So we have Panoni split them up. There are ten basically road structures, whether they be an actual bridge, a pipe, culvert, that's going to be inspected this year with, under this proposal, and sixteen bike hike trails, as well as the Edison Road abutment, which was the old Seven-Arch Bridge. So Panoni has provided us with, the board with a proposal to do this twenty-six inspections this year for two thousand and twenty-four, including all the reports and documentation we need. The total is twenty-six thousand, seven hundred dollars. I'm asking for the board's approval.
So moved.
Your second?
I'll second.
Okay, Barbara and Dan?
Sure.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Five oh.
My second item is, it's a PennDOT Greenlight Go grant. This is for upgraded the traffic signal equipment at Easton Road and Edison Furlong Road. It's a traffic signal, signal modernization project. The Greenlight Go grants are an eighty-twenty match. So PennDOT funds the twenty percent, eighty percent, and we fund the twenty. The proposal prepared by Panoni, by Matt Johnson, our traffic engineer, outlines the, the work in accordance with the agreement, which we had the board approve previous, at previous meetings, and we accepted that grant agreement and had that executed. And right now, so this proposal is for the engineering portion for Panoni's work. The total is for fifty-eight thousand, four hundred dollars. That includes design inspection fees, and I'm asking for the board's approval for that, please.
So moved.
Second.
Barbara, Nancy, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, my next item is for the Central Park bathrooms, site engineering, also known as the Comfort Cottage. This, this proposal was prepared by Pickering Courts in Somerson and is provided to the board for their review and approval. Basically, the outline is that this is all the site engineering work, and I won't read, obviously, everything but for topographic survey, the improvement plan, the sanitary server, service design, MPDS permit amendment, as well as reimbursable expenses. Panoni, I'm sorry, Pickering Courts in Somerson is the site engineers for the, they did this building as well as the Community Recreation Center, so they have all the information. It's logical that, that they continue to do this work, and we're asking the board for their, your approval for this proposal totaling seventeen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars for the bathrooms.
So ju- just to clarify, Dave, this will be all the engineering to put the pad down, and then we will have another scope to put the structure on, which will likely be a prefab building?
Correct.
Okay.
Is this already considered in part of the budget for the project, or is this in addition to?
It's a good question. I know we included the, I thought we included the costs.
Yeah, we included the cost.
In the overall presentation for the project, yes.
Including engineering.
What, I would like to ask you or Jen that at the next meeting, if possibly, we could be enlightened in terms of the process where the rec center project falls, sort of the timeline where things, to not only make sure we're all up to snuff, but I think the public's all very anxious and listening. I think they're excited now they see that the, the fencing is up. So I don't know if that's possible, because if I see additional costs, I'm going to ask, and I just want to be sure, I know what is considered part of the budget and what's not, been already allocated.
Right, so.
I think it was just answered, and I lost sight of what the motion is, or what the request is.
Well, I, I just want to make, I'm just, I don't think we put a motion in yet. I think we were just, Dan, you were asking for an additional.
Yeah, I just.
I just wanted to know whether or not that was part of the budget or not.
I, I just wanted to clarify exactly the, the breakdown, the two pieces, the, the structure, the, the construction versus the planning and what's entailed in both pieces.
The motion would be to approve Pickering and Court, Pickering Courts in Somerson to do the engineer, site engineering for Central Park bathrooms. What's the figure?
Seventeen thousand, five hundred and fifty dollars.
Seventeen thousand.
Let me decide in a sec, and the, the one thing that we are going to be preparing and have, since the project had just started, is kind of a, a construction manager's owner's rep summary, okay, which would include kind of a status of the work.
Thank you.
The look ahead, look ahead is kind of a, a high-level schedule, and then what has been spent to date. Where we are tracking on the, on the engineering side and the soft cost side costs, and now we're starting to track on the construction side. We have started receiving pay applications from the contractors since work has started. So we will, moving forward, every board meeting, the intent is to have something in the packet as information for the board to review and have.
Exactly, I was looking for the scope project, kind of.
Correct, that is the plan.
Thank you very much.
Yep.
So just to clarify, I still don't know, I didn't get a yes or no, whether this was part of the original.
It is.
It was in the, yeah, we, we had this in as an additional cost, but it was part of the overall project presentation, correct. It was, as well as, so the, the only cost that was included in that.
Thank you.
Yes.
How do we make the motion?
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, five oh.
That's bathrooms. Okay, the, the second piece under this, under the Community Recreation Center is Owners Representative Services, Quattro Four Consulting. They've, they've submitted to us a request for what they're calling additional services request, number one. They've kind of identified now some additional items that they see that's a little bit of a schedule creep. So what they've done is they added in some time in their monthly billing and work for schedule, which totals twelve thousand, six hundred and fifteen dollars, as well as additional support for our facilities and infrastructure and equipment to do some consulting on that, which they have in at four thousand, three hundred and fifty dollars. So their, their ask is for a total of six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars in addition to their original fifty thousand dollar proposal. So there, that would raise their, their overall consulting fee to sixty-five thousand, eight hundred and thirty dollars. So this ask is for sixteen thousand, nine hundred and sixty-five dollars.
Entertaining a motion?
I'll make a motion.
I'm sorry, can I, I'm going to ask the same question. Is that part of the contingency then, since this is additional? Is that where this money's going to come from?
Yeah, it's, yeah, it would have to, it's just, as well as if there's any other scope creep from any other reason why, and the project's going to have to come out of the contingency, correct.
As long as I know it's coming from there, thank you.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, I have a motion, do you have a second? I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Five oh.
Second part to the Community Recreation Center is the generator proposals. As we indicated also, as we went through the process of the Recreation Center, we said we're going to have contracted services with the contractors, multi-prime project, and then we were going to buy certain items that, directly from vendors. The generator's one of them, so in my memo, I outlined that we, you know, we solicited proposals from two vendors that were on Co-Stars, Penn Power Systems and Curtis Power Solutions. We've purchased from Penn Power before, that is, that is the generator that is in the back of this building, that powers this building and backs it up. So we've dealt with them before, they are Co-Stars, they are current on Co-Stars, and basically, I'm asking the board to approve their, it is a sales quote proposal to purchase the generator for the Community Recreation Center totaling ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars, I think there's, I had to type on my memo, ninety-four thousand, eight hundred and twelve dollars.
Do you have a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 The last item I have for access control, I'd like to table, I'm sorry.
Sorry.
I apologize.
Go ahead.
My last item for the access control and cameras, the Access Security Corporation proposal, I'd like to table, and I will have on the agenda for February. Still working out some details on door hardware and things like that, so I'd like to table that item, please. I can do that.
I'll make the motion to table.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
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 All I have, thank.
Thank you. Township manager?
Yes, the first item I have is the zoning hearing board solicitors fee, their rates for two thousand and twenty-four. The zoning hearing board selects their attorney to represent them at hearings, and then, but they do always have that fee presented to the Board of Supervisors. I'm hoping next year we can wrap this in with our reorg as well, but we do have Mr. Panzer's letter indicating his fees, and also they use sort of a blended with his paralegal that he uses. So we need the board's, I guess, authorization and approval for his fees and that are part of the zoning hearing board.
So moved.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Five oh. Okay.
The other item I have is a request from Residence Philip Davies. He had paid his county and township taxes during the discount period. Unfortunately, he had put the mail envelope in his mailbox, and apparently, it was stolen. He has reported that to the police and to P N C Bank, his bank, and it was noted that the tax collector had not received it in a timely manner. And when he had the opportunity to meet and show her the canceled check, it was very clear that a corporation had actually endorsed the check and not our tax collector. So he is seeking a refund of the penalty amount. Obviously, he's showing a total of the county and township portion, which in the discount was the two thousand, eighty-nine dollars and seven cents. Our portion of that in the discount would have been seven hundred and eighty-nine dollars and fifteen cents. He will have to seek approval from the county directly, but he is requesting consideration by the Board of Supervisors for the penalty fees to be waived and reimbursed.
I'll make that motion.
Excuse me, I have a question on the, what I saw is a request for a refund of two hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-one cents, am I looking at something that's not correct?
That's correct, I think those are the penalty fees for both entities. So we have some, we have a portion of that, is what.
So he was, he's asking for two hundred and fifty-five dollars and eighty-one cents refund, is that correct?
Correct, to get it down, that was the penalty, the difference, approval.
I just want to make sure, I heard other numbers. I'll make that motion.
I think we already have a motion, sorry.
All right.
You want a second?
Then I, I agree.
Okay, no, do you need a sec, you want a second?
I'll second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
And.
Can I just make a comment? Is there, is it possible that we maybe put out a, a meeting note? We have our e-notes, our township notes about check washing is an issue, I think across the country, potentially just warning people, you know, don't leave your checks in your mailbox, or, you know, potentially just if you're still using checks, take them directly to the post office.
Well, Chief, do we find that as a, as an issue in a township these days? I know it was, it happened a lot last year, but are we continuing to see this type of?
It goes in spurts.
It goes in spurts.
I think, I think it's good to have a little notation in the e-news.
Yeah.
Right, doesn't hurt, right?
Okay.
Okay. The last item I have is the trash haulers permits. You have the, my memo indicates the four haulers that will provide pickup for trash and recycling, which is Enviregreen, Republic Waste Management, and Whitetail. And then you have the ones that do commercial collection and those that do the construction debris collection as well. So if the board authorizes these, we will post them on the website at this time.
Do you recommend these trash haulers, Stephanie?
Yes.
Is that why?
Yes, I would make those recommendations.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye. Unfinished business. Give supervisors. Oh, supervisor comment, thank you.
You did the same thing Barbara does.
I know.
Yay, welcome to the club, Jen.
All right, Dan, would you like to start?
Yeah, I don't have a whole lot to, to mention. My, most of my new committees haven't met yet, but I do just kind of want to echo what the chief was saying earlier, thanking our roads and police crews for being out with our storms the past two weeks, and also, from my perspective, just impressed with our staff on social media, constantly keeping us up with what roads were closed. I was surprised how thorough it was following along on Twitter, and I know it's on Facebook, I don't believe we're on TikTok yet, but that's an initiative for another day.
Okay. Nancy?
The minutes archived.
Barbara, why don't we move to you, do you have supervisor comments? Uh-oh, you're muted. I see.
No, I'm, I'm good, I have a couple of things I'll report next month, thank you.
Okay.
Okay, sorry, just wanted to clarify. When I wanted to thank the Veterans Committee, they were integral part of the Laying of the Reeves on December sixteenth with the committee. I heard there was a great turnout. I was away at my son's graduation, but I wanted to thank them for that. I also wanted to thank the crew for the snow days and Stephanie for getting in here at eight A M. And yes, the social media has been stellar, so thank you.
Good, Judy?
Yes, I'd like to thank Stephanie, everybody here at the administrative offices, the police, and the Public Works. Since I'm the newest supervisor, people have made me feel very welcome, so that's been really nice. I've had a little bit of a crash course on Public Works in particular. I got to tour the, the buildings, and it's impressive what we're able to do with the storm. And I know we had folks stay late last week because of the flooding and, you know, knowing that they're here at the E O C, just in case anything would happen and that there's an emergency and the four officers out in the field. So that's, we're so fortunate to have that. Then in, in terms of even last night, right, we, we know that people are, are here and watching over us and our roads, so that's, that's really good to know. I've had two committee meetings so far, I had the E A C, and they're busy planning their year out, which is always wonderful, very smart, very intelligent volunteers, we're so fortunate to have them. And then just this morning, I was at my, my first bike and hike as the liaison, and they have a lot of projects rolling out. They're starting a subcommittee now to make sure that they're staying within budgets for the trails that we've put in, so that's pretty impressive. And then another, another liaison to join on, so, so that's all I have, but it's been great so far.
Great, thank you. I would also like to thank our manager, Director of Operations, St. Clair, Andrea, the chief lieutenant, and all the people that worked outside in the snow and the rain and the wind. I was fortunate enough to be here at the Township Building during the flooding and, and the wind that we had last week, and these people worked so hard. You wouldn't even, the best part about it is that when you live in the township, you don't need to worry about it, you know, it's, when you get up, it's going to be as best as, the best it can be out there. The trees were going down, I was hearing tree down on this road, tree down this road, and the, the police would come and, and block it off, the crew would come out and clean it up. It was remarkable. So the, these guys, when you're in your bed with your PJs on, these guys are working hard, and, and they're out there taking care of everything so that when you get up in the morning, you can go to work or go to school, unfortunately for some of our kids. I think that's about everything. I also want to thank the Thompson Organization for their commitment to our township programs. We'll be discussing that in the, further down in the agenda. And I did meet with the Dog Park Committee as well, and we will be discussing that further on in the agenda as well. The next order of business is land development. Stephanie, do you want to? Certainly. The board has before it a stipulation for seventeen ninety-six Southeaston Road redevelopment of the old seventeen seventy-six Shopping Center. This has been an item that went to our zoning hearing board and has a way of settling some litigation that's been associated with that. So the board has the stipulation that was prepared by Jeff Garten and has been reviewed and is ready for the board's approval. I see the applicants and their attorney here this evening, and at this time, I just leave it to the board.
I'm entertaining a motion to approve the stipulation?
I move that the, that the Board of Supervisors pass on the settlement stipulation agreement, and I support, and, and in support of that agreement.
Thank you.
I'll second that, and thank you for your patience.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right.
Next is our performing arts performer lineup. It looks like we're going to have another wonderful season with our performing arts. This is where I did want to jump out and say thank you to the Thompson Organization. They've partnered with us for several years now and, and have helped us make incredible experiences for our community. Was everybody able to read the lineup? Excited about the lineup? Okay, I'll.
Can I add one more thing, Madam Chairman, is that, that CNN Bank has also renewed its obligation to, for the naming of the amphitheater.
Thank you, yes, thank you to CNN Bank.
I'll, I'll move the lineup in, in its entirety to be approved.
Okay.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And just one thing I'd like to point out, too, is that this year will be a little different because the, what we fundraise off the Performing Arts Series goes to the community center this year to make sure all of our fundraising efforts for the parks are going towards that.
Great.
Thank you, Dan.
Yep.
The next order of business is our Dog Park Committee sent a, a request to the board, requesting to sunset. They've done a remarkable job, they've built a great amenity for our township, and we appreciate their efforts. And I'll entertain a motion to sunset them. They'll be rolled into the Park and Rec Committee. So they, they're not going away, the Dog Park's going to stay, it's just going to be run through a different committee.
That, that was going to be my question, so events like the Fido float will continue through Parks and Rec?
A subcommittee through Parks and Rec, yes.
Understood.
And Madam Chair.
I'll make that motion.
My recommendation would be, this was, this is a committee that was created by resolution, so my recommendation would be that there be direction given that a resolution be prepared, sunsetting the committee, if that's the direction of the board.
Okay, so I'll need a motion to.
Just direct us to.
Oh, yes, all right, so can I get a motion to direct the solicitor to prepare a resolution to sunset the Dog Park Committee?
I'm, I'm sorry, can I just say clarification with the solicitor? So the people that are on that Dog Park, would they then be rolled on to the Dog, onto the regular park committee? So will they have to apply again, or how does that work? Or are they all?
Well, some of them are already on.
Right.
Park and Rec Committee, so.
Like Debbie's and Warren, there's a few that aren't.
There's a, there will be a subcommittee, and people can come and join to the subcommittee, not as members, but as, as committee mem, or community members.
So we're not adding more people to the park? That's wanted to clarify.
Okay, so I need a motion to direct the solicitor to, to amend the, the resolution or create a resolution to sunset the Dog Park.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you. All right. Do you want to handle the zoning hearing board?
Absolutely, we have two, we have two Aqua Via from Country Club. They're requesting a variance on impervious surface. I would recommend this matter be left to the Z H B.
Okay.
And the second one is the Lutz property, and they're requesting a special exception with a variance, and I would recommend we leave that matter to the zoning hearing board as well.
So no action required? Okay. Treasurers report?
I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Bills list?
Make the motion to approve.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, any public comment on any item? Hearing none, thank you, everybody, and we are adjourned.
There are documents to be signed.
Good night.
Good night, thank you, Barbara.
Thank you, Jen, bye, everybody.
Bye, everybody.